Forgiving of their time and their efforts and their contribution to others, we're thankful for that. We're also all for a special prayer from Mike's father. We pray that you'll be with him and God, if it be your will, that he be returned to a good measure of health. We pray that you'll be with the SIS family and give them comfort and guidance through this troubled time. We're also thankful, God, to give thanks now for our school kids that have gone back to school this week. And last week, we prayed for them, prayed for a good safe and prosperous year for them, and also for the teachers and administrators and other employees that work with them every day. They do a great service, God, we're thankful for them also. We pray you'll be with them, guide them each and every day. Pray you'll watch over us and guide us in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the God for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and with every justice drawn.
First item is approval of the agenda. We have eight items on the agenda for discussion. I wanted to add one final item, number nine, regarding just a quick discussion on the paving, local paving projects. Let's just outline a path forward. So are there any questions or any other changes before we proceed? Do we have motion to approve the agenda with that one item, that one change?
Make the motion.
Motion. Do we have seconds? Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Okay, we have done, signed up to speak this evening, and we have nine discussion items now, so we'll begin. First item regarding electronic poll books. The project director is going to share a little bit of information on what we're looking at and see with that.
Yeah. So, most of you, I know we didn't have it at all the precincts in the November general election, but we had those iPads, electronic poll books, at a good number of them. I think about 20 precincts we got them at. We're going to do a limited trial of that again in this special election cycle. We borrowed, we were able to borrow some of those from the Secretary of State, and we, so we're going to use those. We had some of them where you had multiple iPads that would slow down during the day. We have a few polling places that we did that. So, we want to try this again with these, with an additional number for this special election. We're going to use them, and we expect next year to own and use some. So there's some different vendors that the Secretary of State's office has approved. We've got about $30,000 in HAVA funds. It's federal money that the office got back.
You remember Mr. Porter, how long ago?
A long time ago.
Wow.
So we still have about $30,000. That money that's in the Secretary of State's office, it's that their office are holding for. So, what we're figuring on, the prices that I've received on these things are going to be around $1,200 a piece, depending on how this special election goes, how many we need. Because if we had one at each of those places, or if we double that. Scottsdale, we had six, if we have to put 12, that's six more. Stevenson, Bridgeport, we had two, we have to put four, and that's four more. So, we're looking at around $50,000 to $60,000. I just wanted to tell you all that that's, I mean, and we have an option. It's entirely up to you all to use, continue to use the paper list if you want to. I think the other ones worked really well. I don't know where you all vote, if they use them or not. I know that y'all did. I think they worked really great. I'm really pleased with them, and I'd like to see us using them. Also understand the money thing. So, we've got about $30,000 that we're going to be able to invest in this next year. Just wanted y'all to know that if we do it, we're going to be about 30 grand short. We'll own these. These will be similar to the machines that we have for people that are vision impaired. The county owns those, okay? The ones that you put your valid in, you lease. You lease those from ESNS every election. But these pole pads will be owned by the county. So, be up to us to repair them, be up to us to store them, and all that good stuff, just like we do with those AD-8 machines. You guys have any questions for me?
What's the life expectancy for one of these pads?
Don't know, they're brand new. So, we don't know, I mean, it's, in all honesty, the ones that we've used prior were just iPads. So, it's not going to be, not going to be using any different software or anything. So, once you get it... Looks like.
Next question is how long it'll be before they're obsolete?
Good question. Good question. No idea. I mean, you know, in these, I mean, you're not going to be continually doing different stuff with them, all right? You're not running different programs. I mean, it's the same thing. We have a laptop that we've been using to do the election for three years. It's not changed, nothing's changed. It's still fine.
So the software and everything can be updated on the equipment?
I would think so, as needed to be. As long as the, as long as the voters listen to stuff, you know, the way that the Secretary of State does that, as long as that don't change, I don't see why it would be any different in the program to... Because it uses a magnetic strip on your driver's license. It makes it, I liked it, I thought it was pretty neat.
The voting information, how is it extracted from, is it plugged up to a computer when they bring it from the courthouse?
Now, these are just the poll books. So what they're, they're returned election night, then they're sent down to the board registrars, and then they're able to, I don't know how they do it, they dance them, but they plug a cord into it and import. So, when you go vote, everybody gets credit. You go and vote, you get credit. If you miss too many elections, I guess they purge you. I don't know exactly how that works. So, when you go, I think presently, without these, they do it with a scan gun. Scan gun and ruler, a piece of paper, to give everybody credit. This will import everybody that votes. And you get the right person because you're the only person that's got your driver's license. This has nothing to do with casting a ballot. Zero to do with marking a ballot and voting, okay? This is just getting you to get a ballot. When you go with your driver's license and you set it up on the tray and it takes a picture, it knows it's Jackson Vennam. But then you still get your same paper ballot, and you go mark it as you always have, and then you put it in the machine. So this has nothing to do with the process of casting a ballot.
So you won't be voting on that machine then?
No, never have, no. This is a poll book. There's a paper poll book. When you go to vote in a special election, you're going to write your name on one of the poll books, on one of the party books. They'll print your name, you'll sign your name, they give you a ballot. Whereas with these, you set your license up on a tray, and it would scan my CISC, and it would have your address, it'd verify that stuff, you'll sign on the pole pad, and then once that's returned to the board registrars, they would import it with a cord, rather than having to go into a mail-in. But you still will get your same ballot.
So you're still going to have to have the same help to maintain, keep this up, or at the voting side, right?
Oh yeah, yeah, yeah. And that actually, interestingly enough, that's set by the machines. Per machine, we're supposed to have at least one inspector and three poll workers per machine. So there's not any per-voting machines.
So the other thing this does is speed up the process after the fact.
It does, and I could see, you know, if you're busy and you go through there when you're voting or when the board registrars are giving credit, if you get off on the wrong line, it may or may not give you credit. It's not anything bad, it's not going to change that, it's, by no means is this changing the accuracy of the results of an election. But when you can just plug that thing up, it just makes things easier, quicker.
When will the funding be needed for this?
Well, I really wanted to try to get through at least half of this election cycle, this special election cycle, to see what, what machines we wanted to, because we'll be needing to use them in June, like next year's June primary. If we're going to do it, you know. If you don't have the funds, that's fine. They're not going to take this HAVA money away from us.
My next question is if something's got to be spent, being posted.
Or could you do half now or half later?
You can. I would say either do all of it or do none of it, because if you're still using paper books and iPads, then you're just, you know what I'm saying? I would either, if you can't do it now, just put it off and wait.
I was thinking some of your more busier polling places, or the ones that have larger numbers maybe?
You could, you could, but then when you get there, you do the ones with one, one machine or one book, and then you end up with an election like we had this past November. It's still going to, it's still going to slow everything down. And as far as the board registrars are concerned, I don't know, I don't know that it matters to them, but as far as us in trying to keep up and train and everything, I would, I would either do it or not. I mean, because like I say, we can settle this money. If we need to wait another year, we can just settle. Another reason, you know, a lot of times along you wait, some stuff gets cheaper, some stuff gets higher.
Any other questions or comments? I don't think, I don't think we've discussed this in the budget meetings, correct?
I didn't have any good numbers.
Okay. So we'll, I guess we'll take a look at this, maybe have another work session for further discussion, see how we want to proceed. Does that appropriate? So, again, knowing that there's still, you want to get through this election, it'll be next. First, the next year before we know for sure.
August, what's it, September? By September. We should know what's working and what's not working.
In September.
And another thing, Ms. Gilbert, another thing, if we, if you have, if you do have changes in something, if we bought half now and half two years later, if those change in any way, then we end up with two different kinds. You know, I don't want to, I don't want to get into...
Training?
Yeah, because I'm afraid we'd lose money. But I mean, we, we'll do, by all means, we'll do whatever you guys want to.
We want to look at the second of October to put this on the next work session for discussion. Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, next item regarding fertilizer spraying flat rock. This has been brought up, I think it's brought up in the work session previously. I don't want to limit discussion, but everybody does have a letter in their packets with an invitation to go and understand a little bit more about how this process works. I think it'd be wise for us to take advantage of that opportunity to understand, you know, the process, how it works, so that we can move forward with any other discussions that need to be had on this. We do have some representatives from Denali Water Solutions, that's correct. And they said they'll be, they are willing to answer any questions. Of course, we can ask anything now. They said they'll be willing to sit around a little bit after and answer any questions. But I do think it'd be wise if we set a date as soon as possible and accept this invitation to understand a little bit more about how the process works. So, is there any question or comments on this right this point? I think if we, if you do this, and then of course come back to another work session, have further discussions. We also did receive a letter from the mayor's office. They wanted to clarify that the city of Chattanooga does not actually do any of this spraying. And of course, this gives a little bit more clarification as to how the process works and what's happening there. Any questions or comments?
I'd like to talk with them, I mean, I'll have to right now, I appreciate you coming forward. Sure. Because me being a farmer myself, and I don't want anything put out there that's going to be harmful to anyone, you know. So, we'll, we'll wait and have some questions here a little bit. Sure. Thank you.
If, if there's no objection, I can, we can look at a date that would be suitable for most everyone and set a date, we'll have to announce it, but set a date to visit and I'll contact, be in contact with the lady that this letter's from and confirm, you know, how that will work. But if everyone's interested, then we'll try to coordinate it that way. Does that sound appropriate? Okay. You guys have anything in particular that you should share? All right, then we'll proceed that way, and we can plan on probably having this back on the agenda if we can get something set up during the next several weeks. And maybe in September, we can have this on the agenda after week, mid-understand some more about it. Okay, next item will be regarding temporary maintenance position at the Johnson County Park. Mr. Barnes?
Yeah, the person I have right now, their date is up the 18th of this month, sixth month, and this is the second time we've hired him. So I need to see if I can't hire another temp employee at the park. So we're still, we're still moving around and kind of stretched, stretched thin, so.
Any questions on this? This is something we maintain temporary employees.
How is doing it a six-month?
I think six months is the maximum amount of time per instance.
You can do two six-months.
So, are there any questions? If this is budgeted, if there's an objection, then we can move forward with the process and submit a name when...
I should have a name by next Monday.
Okay, all right. If there's an objection, we'll proceed as stated. Okay. Next item regarding the COA bus surplus, Ms. Thurman?
Yes, we have two buses that need to be rotated out of our inventory. One will be to replace the 2017 bus that we should be receiving before the end of the year. The second one, we're going to go ahead and ask to surplus it because the transmission has gone out in it, and they told us that it would not be feasible to fix it. So we're going to look at having to purchase something else. They've got some from other agencies that might be less expensive than a new one. But in any event, we have to rotate them out because we replace buses we don't, we're not adding to our service. But we've got those two that, and I believe that Larry talked with you, Jonathan, about going ahead and putting them on GovDeals, seems to be the easiest way for us.
This is just a surplus set, or will we need, or will we be looking at some new buses to replace this one?
The, one of them, we already have the new bus in for this year. And then we have the, the next one, yes, we will need to replace it, it won't be until 2019.
So one of these right here is the transmission is bad?
Both of them, actually.
Transmission?
Mm-hmm.
They're not going to burn any fire, but they are. What is the cost to replace or rebuild this transmission? Have you had any input for the cost?
Yes, I believe the last one that we checked on was something like $4,600. And because of the mileage and the wear on the bus and the rate that we're supposed to take them out of service at, the AlDOT let us know that it was not feasible to fix the bus, that we needed to look at getting one that was, that was either surplus from someone else and it didn't have any problems, or to go ahead with a new bus.
Any other questions or comments? If there's no objection, then we'll place this on the agenda next week for, to vote for surplus on these. Okay. Next item regarding a third-party agreement for a COA.
Yes, this, this is just for you to agree for us to enter into a third-party agreement with two different entities that we have contracts with for transportation. They are billed on a miles-an-hour basis instead of a per-ride fee. And we just have to have your approval to go ahead with this.
Any questions or comments on this? Is this something done annually?
Yes. Well, actually, we do the contracts annually, but to my knowledge, this is the first time we've ever had to do a resolution. They're changing a lot of things. I think they're getting a lot of new mandates.
Any questions or comments on this item? If there's no objection, we'll place this on the agenda next week as well.
Thank you.
Okay, next item regarding the sanitation recycle tech position, Mr. Robinson?
Yes, I've got our organizational chart on the top there to show that we do have a vacancy position for another employee. A few years back, we cut back and we didn't actually lay nobody off. We let a couple go to public works, and then we've had one of the directors who leave, and I moved up, and then one of my guys' drivers moved into the recruitment position. So that created a vacancy on our organizational chart. On the second page, you'll see that we've, I mean, we wrote up a new job description, and it's for a recycled tech. Our recycling has continued to grow all the time, and we have had a temporary, the last two years, that it, that has been staying busy, I mean, it just keeps him busy. So, with that being said, it's also been his six months that he's worked for us. So, I would like to request, if possible, that we just go ahead and make this a full-time position. And probably if we do, we'll have to approve the organizational chart change and then approve the job description.
Are you looking to maintain the driver or basically change that driver to this tech position?
It'll be, it'll be change the technician, recycling technician. I'll drop it down and make it recycling technician.
Questions or comments on this?
Does this position earn any budget?
Yes.
We just... It's going to change the job title, basically, when it comes to...
Yes, it'll change the job title there from driver collector, because with these automatic trucks we've got, and I have a flow for that, and then I have a roll-off driver. I do believe that in the future, we'll be good with our drivers that we have now, unless we have to add another route or another truck in somewhere.
What's going to be the difference in play on this?
This is going to be a grade four, step one.
The driver's grade?
They're grades five.
Grade one?
Five.
Any questions or comments? You ready to move forward with this proceeding?
Yes, I'd like to, if y'all would, if we could approve it, I'd like to go ahead and we'll do internal for the first week, and then we'll do probably external thereafter.
If there's no objection, we'll place this on the agenda next Monday for approval. The sanitation surplus, Ms. Robinson?
Yes, this is a piece of equipment. The roll-off that we bought, and which is doing very good, he had a manual tarp system on there, which caused the guys, they would have to climb up and down a lot, kind of very dangerous. And during the process of that, the tarp on it tore up. So we put a new automatic tarp on there so that one guy can go out and do these jobs with, and keep everything safe. This piece of equipment, we really have no use for it anymore. It won't fit nothing but a roll-off, I mean, so we couldn't put it on a dump truck or something like that. And we really don't have a good place to store or put it. With that being said, I would like to request for could, there's not a real high demand for those, neither just at the present time, but I would love to get that surplus. And I already have some that have requested or interest, or showed interest in it, so.
Any questions or comments on this item?
Those 1,500 down here is kind of what you thought they were.
Yes, that's where we, because the tarp, we're taxing $500 for the tarp. If the tarp is on it still good, I at least won't have the cost of it, but since the tarp is going to have to be replaced.
Any other questions or comments? Do you plan to place this on GoBuild or work with local authorities if they're interested?
Lock them in the status.
All right, so do we have a, I'm sorry, we'll do that again next week. If there's objection, we'll place this on the agenda for next week as well. Okay, next item is appointments at Albana Mountain Lake Tourism Board. We have had a vacancy this week. Yes, Mayor Lott's position is vacant at this time. That does not, the position is not in until September of next year. So we have had one person interested in participating on this board, and they've submitted a letter requesting that. So if there's no objection, we'll place this on the agenda next Monday to fill this position, and we'll take nominations and then fill this position next week. Any questions or comments on that? Place that on the agenda next week. The final item is regarding the local projects, local paving projects. So Mr. Campbell had directed an action on how to proceed.
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. We touched on this in our budget meetings, but we didn't elaborate on the process. So, what the chairman is referring to is how we plan to proceed with our local paving projects. The projects that you guys have chosen for us to resurface locally. We plan to prepare a plan set for those. We're still in the works of preparing them for paving, so we're planning on having a plan set ready and advertising those and inviting bids on that. And then we'll be back before you with the bids that we've received and for your review and award. So it's nearly near eight miles, but the need for this is basically due to what we touched on in the budget meetings, with our resources. You know, when we allocate the folks that we need to prepare the roads for paving, then with our numbers, those folks are not available to do the paving if we're going to be successful in paving what we have planned for this year.
Questions or comments on that? Any objection to proceeding? With putting a plan together and looking at the bid process? If there's none, don't necessarily need the commission's approval to submit a bid, but if there's any objections to the way that we want to proceed, we need to know that now before we put all the plans together and pursue a bid.
Any bid we try and pull?
We'll advertise and invite, but we'll invite all the contractors that we're aware of or have bid in the past for this groundwork.
If there's no objection in proceeding in such a way, then we'll put a plan together, and we'll notify the commissioners when it's time to, when we're prepared to do it, and put that out there, then of course the commission will have to approve whatever results we get.
How many men does it take to put a paving crew together?
We need minimal 10, but it's, you know, 12 to 15 is typically what it takes. It takes about all of us to pave. We're, you know, we're on 155 right now, and still, we need to reset a box of coal, and there's two to three weeks worth of work. There's quite a bit of cross-drain replacements needed on 38. The road's in pretty good, you know, relatively good shape, but a lot of that on 155, you know, once... It's like we talked about, you know, in other projects, but once they deteriorate to the point of, then they have to be reclaimed or turned under, basically repaired. The length of time it takes to have those roads back up ready for new chip seal, you know, it costs more time and more expense to prepare them. So, 38 is not to that shape, but it's still going to have a lot of cross-drain work before it's ready for paving. And so, that would be the last one we'd like to get in this project. We're speaking of the guys that still be preparing County Road 8 in-house, and then what our goal will be to pave that in-house before cold weather catches.
Any other questions or comments? Then we'll keep you informed, keep us all informed on how the process goes.
Yes, sir.
That's fair. That concludes the items for discussion for this evening, so I'll move on to our reports. Mr. Robinson, what do you think? Ms. Thurman?
Yeah.
Chief Deputy?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Campbell?
I just wanted to update you on the projects, the federally projects. County Road 33, Phase 2, we've been calling it. The signs should go up Wednesday, and then we're looking at least a mid-August start date on that. So that's County Road 28 to County Road 32. County Road 63 project, that's still on track for November 18. It's right now, that's in, at Albana, planning to view later stages of that, so we're still looking for the November 18 on it. And then County Road 42, which is the last one approved. We're preparing this couple of work with Aldot right now and having that project engineering record finalize, so we're looking at summer 18 for that later. And then this week, we'll likely advertise for a County Road 92 bridge rehab, which, that's our design bill that we talked about some. So, there'll be an advertising period that we're looking to start upcoming week, next week. And then there'll be a pre-bid meeting that we'll hold... meeting that we'll hold with likely contractors for bids, and then, once we have that designer in view, then we'll actually have the bid open, and then we'll be back before you present that and select for the award for the bid.
Any questions on that?
On 33, no, is that project you think comes back? Boring weather?
Yeah, the, I wanna say it's 30 working days, so it'd probably take half the weather good.
Anything, Burton?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Manning?
Nothing.
Mr. Porter?
Nothing, right, man.
Mr. Barnes?
No, sir.
Judge?
No, sir.
Okay. Mr. Bimmel?
No.
Mr. Sisk?
No.
Ms. Gilbert?
No, sir.
Okay. That concludes everything we have on the agenda for this evening. We will take a 10-minute recess, we did have a budget meeting scheduled to continue afterwards, so we can make that forward if we need to, we can continue that if need to. But we'll take a 10-minute recess, determine what will be further on that, and return in 10 minutes.